2024, I would ask that everyone please stand for our invocation by Pastor Keith Huss of Mount Zion Baptist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you for this opportunity. Jeremiah 33:3 tells us, "Call unto me and I will answer you and show you great and mighty things which you do not know." So tonight, together, we pray out to God. Father, we thank you for tonight. We thank you for what you're about to do. We pray for wisdom and strength and courage, God, to do things that are good for all citizens. We pray tonight, God, that we act in love for common good, that we come together as good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person here. Tonight, Father, I pray for our servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, and our city council. I pray, God, and give thanks for the way they serve and choose to serve on your behalf. Father, tonight, in this room, we are complex human beings. We carry burdens, we carry joy and hope. We trust you alone and that you will hold us together. And I pray, God, tonight, for love and peace. Help us love and trust you even more. May our fears, our wounds be more than our accomplishments tonight, God, as we trust you in all things. Father, tonight, we lean on you and your everlasting arms, and we ask, God, through love, through your mercy, and through your grace, that you are held high tonight, that you are, God, honored and glorified through this all that is said, and, God, may you be seen in all that is done. And it's in Jesus Christ's holy name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not under God, indivisible, with whose every kingdom is just a crown.
You may be seated. The first item that we have to address tonight is the agenda approval. What is the council's pleasure on approving the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and there is none. Item five is approval of minutes of A, our city council regular meeting of December the 11th, 2023, and B, our city council special work session meeting of December the 28th, 2023. What is the action that council would like to take on approving of the minutes?
Make a motion that we approve those sets of minutes, the city council meeting of December the 11th and the work session on December 28th, and that we approve them both at the same time.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of A, city council regular meeting of December the 11th, and B, our city council special work session meeting of December the 28th, 2023. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and it is unanimous. Next item is the mayor's comments, and I will be brief tonight. I know a lot of people want to see the championship football game, so we want to get out of here at a reasonable time. On December the 20th, the city held the ribbon cutting for the reopening of Westgate Park. A large crowd was in attendance, complimenting how great the park looks. There are certain selected touch-ups left to do, and I urge all our citizens, take the time to drive out there and look at all the upgrades that have been completed to this park. City manager Brian Dalton has informed the council that Lance, Mr. Lance Hudson, has been officially employed as the city's new recreation director. Mr. Hudson is due to begin his duties on February the 5th, and congratulations go out to Mr. Hudson, as we wish him immense success as director of our recreation department. With the additional funds we are receiving from the state, plans are to replace the roof on the historical museum. The city also has plans to pave the parking area at the community building. Parking in this area becomes desirable as Main Street continues to grow, especially with the addition of new eating facilities. This will be another enhancement to draw people to our downtown area. This concludes the mayor's comments. We'll move to the next item in our agenda, and this is a consideration of a public hearing in reference to rezoning terrace estates, and the planning and zoning director, Richard Eland, will lead us through this. At this time, I would entertain a motion that we enter into public hearing.
I'm in.
Second.
We have a motion and two seconds to enter into public hearing. We are now considered in public hearing, and I would now turn it over to our planning and zoning director, Richard Eland, who would like to speak to us concerning terrace estates, and if you'll go on your laptop, that will begin on page 25.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I started with some responses, some advertisers and mail out for the property owners. Only had three responses, a Mr. Vance, Aaron Vance, he lived at 209 Black Rock School Road, a Ms. Sumner, who lived at 213 Black Rock School Road, and none of them voiced any disconcerters. And the other gentleman standing in office today, he owns about three-fourths of property to the west, so that's Mr. Alvin Jean Delinger, and he'll be talking to the council during this public hearing. He has some concerns on water runoff. What will the developer do to help prevent more runoff? Okay, I'll go through what you have on your computer now. Page 25 and 26 is just the application for this rezoning. It's currently zoned R12, as are all the houses to the east of it, but they are applying to an R9 cluster development. Now, R9 zoning is a R9 cluster development. I wanted to point that out, there's a difference. R9 is for 9,000 square foot lots, but the R9 cluster is for 6,000 square foot lots. Everybody understand that? I want to ask that every time, make sure we understand.
I'm glad you do.
It's confusing. Your page 27 is the records of events. You know, we notified the property owners and the gentleman who submitted the application on October 31st, 2023, for the property to be rezoned, what I just mentioned, from R12 to R9. At the regular meeting of the charitable planning board on November 20th, after a lengthy meeting, the planning board made a recommendation to the city council, was denial of the request. At the regular meeting of the city of charitable council on December 11th, we set a public hearing date for tonight, January 8th. December 14th, parcel 158768 was posted of tonight's meeting. Adjacent property owners and the applicant, and like I said, the property owners were notified of first-class US mail, and the city hall was posted of this notice of public hearing tonight. And the legal notice of the public hearing was advertised in Eagle on December the 20th, 2023, and December 27, 2023. Page 28 shows a submitted plat, and Mr. Upshaw here brought a bigger plat when he gives his presentation to explain everything. Like I said, the properties, the parcels, to the south and to the east are zoned R12, as was this 33 acres. The plat shows how it would be laid out with two entrances, a cul-de-sac, a walking trail, sidewalks, et cetera, which Mr. Upshaw will explain also. Page 29 is, as you can see, I just circled it, that is, the 33 acres that are west of the houses on Black Rock School Road. Page 30 shows the zoning, all the zoning of those properties. As you see, R12 are all the homes to the west of Black Rock School Road. To the south is the Delview community, and on the other side of Black Rock School Road to the east, in the Dewey, Venus Estates, they are also R15. Page 31, if you look at the bottom of the page, I made a circle around the large parcel that they're asking to be rezoned to the R9 cluster development. And it is, it does go along with the proposed future land use map. You can see all that brown in there? That is for family dwellings. So it does meet the future land use requirements. Page 32, again, is Mr. Upshaw, he's telling what things will be in place at this new development. You know, you'll have curb and gutter, sidewalks on one side of the street, a walking trail behind it, underground electrical and internet utilities. You'll have one location at the interest of one of these two places for the mailboxes to be placed. There'll be a homeowners association to manage the common areas and keep the subdivision in good condition, which is great, places upon them, be, you know, the high grass and the junk cars, et cetera, et cetera, which is really a good thing. Be a tree buffer along the back of the lots that border the existing homes along Black Rock School Road to give privacy, and they'll probably maintain a lot of the trees that are already existing to make that buffer thicker. And the lots have at least six feet side setbacks to keep distance between the houses. Our ordinance was showing that it was five feet, but they're going to increase that to six feet. So that way you've got houses 12 feet apart instead of 10 feet apart. And there'll be street trees along the streets. Now, page 33, I'll go over this so everyone understands it, and if you don't, please ask a question now, and I'll try to explain it. You can grant the rezoning as requested to cluster zoning to R9, which allows for 6,000 square foot lots. That's what the applicant is asking for. Another option you would have would be grant the rezoning, it's currently zoned R12, but would be cluster development of R12, 8,000 square foot lots, or just R12, 12,000 square foot lots. That'd be two options in R12. Grant a rezoning to R9 single-family residential, which would give 9,000 square foot lots. Or grant a rezoning up to R15 in a cluster development, which would give 10,000 square foot lots. And it's up to city council to approve one of those or denial of the application request was the last option. At the end of all the public hearing, y'all will come out of public hearing, you'll go through the segment of consistency. If the answer is not yes, or is consistent, or is not reasonable, then there's no reason to go into the special use program. But if it's accepted, then we have to go into the special use program and have one of those. And like I said, Mr. Delinger will speak whenever y'all, he has the option to speak. If there's any other questions, I can answer now, if you do not understand what you have to do.
You recall what problems the planning board had with it?
They just gave the denial, they, I think it's the size of the lots, probably, is the only thing. We had three new members on the planning board that were not there for the other approvals of one on Requay Road or Strouts, so we have three new members out of seven on the planning board.
Those two, they have been approved, they're all.
Sir?
The two that have been approved so far, their cluster was nine?
Those two were approved as.
Is it 9,000 or 6,000?
Or 6,000?
6,000?
I don't know when the time dates were, but I think current city council, except for Ms. Hope, just approved those.
Just couldn't remember if it was six or nine.
It is, Mr. Freeman. It's the R9 cluster.
R9, okay.
It's the 6,000 square foot.
Gotcha, okay. What, the same as what they're asking for?
Yes, sir.
I read the minutes of the planning and zoning meeting, and I thought that the members in that meeting, according to the minutes, were very thorough. I thought the questions were very good, and I thought, I thought they were very thorough.
I'm trying to remember.
Okay, does any council member have any other questions for our planning and zoning director? I think he's basically explained the difference between the R9 and the R12 and the R12 cluster. And if we go with the R12 cluster, that's 8,000 square foot lots, and would that be with the six-foot setback also?
Yes. It says five, but our builder's agreed to the six. He has that stated on the plea letter there.
Okay, and would that be in, be consistent with what we have with Stratt Acres and Requay?
That would be, yes, sir.
Okay, I mean, we've done it for two other divisions, and I'm just saying, how, how can we change it or restrict it in any way? But I know we're very lenient on what we can ask for, so. But this, it sort of reminds me the way that Requay and Stratt Acres are, because it's off, out of the city. I mean, the, what we call the inner city. All, all the land is outside that area, so.
The planning board asked for the zoning, and I did not go at that time, but it's zoning R1, which is four.
Okay.
I'm just trying to hear from Mr. Delinger.
Okay. If it's okay with council, we'll have Mr. Delinger, Mr. Alvin. Delinger has signed up to speak during the public hearing. It wasn't necessary to sign up, but you do have the floor now. If you'll come to the podium, state your name and address, and, and.
I'm Alvin Jean Delinger, 1810, 1820, Delphi, Rhode. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the reason I'm here is the concern of the runoff. The farm is a North Carolina century farm. It's been recognized, actually, it's old enough now to be a bicentennial farm, and I'm concerned, there are two tributaries that feed into Muddy Fork Creek from the development. The water is flowing all westward down the hill, and what I'm concerned about is, and I was glad to see the developer already has one retention pond. That would need to be large, and I want to explain to you why. Growing up and being on the farm all my entire life, I have seen the flow of water when, where the development is going to be within cotton, corn, and wheat. And on the summer of the inverse, I've seen the creek get to 10 feet. The creek number one, the first tributary, be as high as 10 feet in there when we didn't have a canopy. Now the development has a canopy in addition to the houses that are there. I would encourage the developer to leave as much canopy as possible, because now my tributary one is flowing about anywhere from two, three, and four feet, and if it gets to up to eight, it will wash out my entrance to the farm. And then on the back, tributary number two retains the water.
Mr. Delinger, could you take this large picture and show us where you're talking? Are you talking here or over here?
Okay, we're talking about this part where you see the blue pond.
Right, you're talking about down here.
That's correct. What I'm showing, if you can see this one, you can see the two tributaries. One is here, that's one tributary. The second tributary is at this point. Okay? And the back one, now, is about two feet when we have heavy rain. Like tomorrow, if we have two days that continue with heavy rain, we will have three to four feet in tributary number one, and the tributary number two will have a couple of feet. My concern is the runoff, and I'm glad to, again, say the developer at least has one retention pond. I'd like for them to consider putting a second one in, because, and my reasoning is, when I was growing up, I know how much water comes off of that ground when it didn't have a canopy. Now we do have a canopy, and we're down to a couple, two, three feet in the tributaries. So my concern is, and also at the bottom of those tributaries are EPA wetland, designated wetland, and the question would be then, how the water gets pollutants, the sediments, then get into the wetland, and all that's going into Moss Lake. And so I'd like to ask the council and the developer to consider a second sediment pool so that we keep the quality of Moss Lake, because eventually all of us are going to drink water from that lake. I still have my well and the springs that are contributors to these two creeks, but that's the one thing I want the group to consider, is the runoff and taking care of the sediments, that they don't end up, because in the nineties, there was EPA and the USDA did a study of the sediments that were flowing into Moss Lake, and part of those actually came from the farm, which amazed me that they came to see me about, and we talked about doing a retention even in that sediment one creek, but then they decided against it. Instead of putting rock up and slowing the water down, they decided to let nature take its course, and therefore, the creek now is about an inch and a half, a foot and a half deeper than it was when I was growing up, because they had always cut the ditch banks back and piled lumber of the trees into the bottom of that. And of course, that hasn't been done in about 25 or 30 years at this point. But that's my biggest concern, is to take care of the sediment that doesn't end up in the muddy fork and then into Moss Lake.
Where do you think that other retention pond ought to be?
Well, I think that what it is, you've got the development, and all the water from here is coming into tributary two, and the water from here is coming into tributary one. And like I said, I'm glad to see this one. It'll need to be large enough to be able to take care of the water that comes off, when, especially if the canopy is taken out, and it will have to be taken out for these houses to be built. So I would encourage that the canopy, as much of it, as we can retain, with the protection of the water. We're all more environmentally conscious today than we've ever been. I didn't think about environment when I was growing up, and I'm 80 years old, and that's my concern. We all need to be concerned about environment when you think about water pollution and the chemicals, and even USDA, I have a report I do each year on the fertilizers that I've used and the pesticides that I've used. I have to report that to the USDA and the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. It's part of my yearly report, so.
So you're saying this other pond ought to be over here?
It needs to take care, this water that's here comes this way.
Yeah.
And it needs to be taken care of somewhere in here, or not even where past this, because you've got the drainage from here coming to this temperature.
So it would be on this side of the walking trail?
Yes, and I'm glad to see the walking trail, and I hope the canopy will be preserved for that walking trail, because it gets hot in August, July and August, and if you're going to outwalk, I like that idea of the walking path, but that the canopy be preserved as much of it as possible, so that those that walk will be able to enjoy the walk without having the hot sun on them. And there's plenty of trees there now to do that with.
Maybe that loop they have there could be around the pond.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. And the big thing is, these are pine, a lot of this is pine timber, and if you think about, in our science classes, even so many years ago, we talked about the carbon dioxide and the evergreens being responsible for producing the oxygen, both in summer and in winter. So that, that's one thing I think that ought to be considered in terms of a candidate in service, as much as we can. General has the good benefit of having good quality air. You go to the Estonia, it's not. You go to Charlotte, it's not. We do have better air here, and I think it's because we still have not taken our canopies away in this storm.
Jean, do you still go into your property off of Delview?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's that same one, and there is the danger of the creek there that's going to wash out the road into your house?
That's correct.
Because it's low?
Yes.
I see what you're saying.
And see, I've seen the spring underwater before.
Right.
In the spring house.
I've seen it. I've worked a bad bit down in that area too, so, yeah.
And of course, that's one of the reasons that Dad and I both quit bothering to tien the bottoms and plant because of the wetland designation. And my concern is all the sediment runoff. You get eight or 10 feet of water coming down through the first there, you're going to have a lot of tear out of the drainage system, and that would be into the wetlands.
Is that the, the same creek that runs into Dock Wee Hunts?
Yes. Yes, that's muddy fork.
Okay, and then to Moss Lake?
Yes, ma'am. So that's, that would be my consideration, that the developer look at having an additional retention pond for the sediment.
Okay.
And I'll be glad to answer any questions. And like I said, this is the area we show the two tributaries.
Okay.
When you look at it, when you're up on Delview, you don't think about the tributaries, but there are two of them from the farm leading into Muddy Fork in Moss Lake.
Yeah, I used to own some land there.
Thank you for your time, for allowing me to talk to you about the development.
So you're, you're not against it at all, you just want to make sure that it's.
Yeah, the runoff, because I'm looking at what the runoff is now from the canopy that's there, and thinking about what it was like, John, whenever. I was a child growing up and watching.
You know, you've been there.
Over my head.
Very good information.
Over my head. That's my concern, that it will tear up the entire water system completely, muddy fork. You've got, you have a lot of water rushing against that plane and tearing into that on the hammer side, what used to be the weight distribution property. And see, you've got this development draining into tributary two, plus part of the queen property that they own drains into tributary two.
Yeah, I used to have about 15 acres down there that ran into the same creek.
That was enlightening.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Can I ask you one question?
Good stuff.
So, when the current houses on that side of Black Rock School Road were built?
Yes.
I'm sure all that was cleared out. Did you notice a difference in the runoff then?
You had a greater runoff when all that was cleared proper, and when it was cultivated in cotton and corn and wheat, you had tremendous runoff.
Gotcha.
See, you're, when you. See, when you're looking at Black Rock, it's here, and everything down to Muddy Fork Creek isn't anywhere. And you've got a little bit of water on the front of those houses along Black Rock that drain into what I call, that used to be the Kendrick property, but the Dewey Bean estate down that way. But there's very little, that's on that other side of Black Rock draining that way. But from here to Muddy Fork is coming all down here.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Upshaw?
Yes.
You have the floor now, if there's some comments you want to make.
Very good. One of the reasons we chose to go with the R nine cluster is the smaller lots, which preserves, everything you see in green is going to be preserved. So that the water, anything coming, will be caught through.
Let me interject something here. Richard, can you come and hold that for him? So he can get it on the cameras back there.
Are you saying you're going to keep all that canopy he was talking about?
We're going to keep it all. Everything you see in green will remain.
Yeah, if you can go around speaking to the microphone right there, that'd be great. We have people in line that...
All right. So what you're seeing is currently already approved by the state as far as stormwater control. All of the roads, everything that runs off go into the pond that's shown on here. We're certainly not averse to adding another pond if you think that's necessary. We want to preserve all of that green space. The walking trail would simply be a trail through the woods. And we really are looking to make a very nice neighborhood. It will not be visible from Black Rock School Road for the most part because you're looking up a hill and then down into the neighborhood. The tree canopy along the back of the lots on Black Rock School Road will be almost 10 feet, 20 feet. It's in all the documents, but that's going to be preserved so that when you're on Black Rock School Road, you do not see a two-story house behind the existing one-story homes. Anything you would like us to do as far as making bigger lots will eat into that tree preserve area.
And right now, you're proposing, what, 100?
100 homes.
100 homes?
Yes. And improving the water infrastructure for this area is part of the subdivision. We have gotten quotes to Brian with the city on taking care of that. And this is Mr. Tom Tutz, he is with Century Homes. And he is, they have agreed to help participate in paying for that infrastructure at the time the lots are purchased.
You're talking about the water line that will have to go in there to increase the pressure?
And Mayor Council, what he's talking about is from Henry Putnam all the way to Black Rock School Road, and I think it's exactly 1,631 linear feet of 12-inch water line that would have to be installed to solve the pressure issue out on Black Rock School Road. And that would have to be done first before any construction.
Will that help the water pressure for the people that already live out there?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah. They can live gone.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I make my statement?
Yes.
I was not on, it's like Gary said, I was not on the city council when the previous two developments were approved. And my concern with rezoning this, first is the existing R 12, the houses that are already existing on Black Rock School Road. I just, I am of the opinion that I'm not sure what, how the density would change, but I think the lower density in this area is going to be beneficial to the entire community because the higher density we get on these developments, it's going to impact everything in our community. So I would like to see this remain what it is, R 12, based on those reasons.
But you're talking about regular R 12, not R 12 cluster?
Yes. How would that affect the density?
I can...
Mr. Upshaw?
I might can help answer a little bit of that. From speaking to Reese Wright, our engineer, what he has told me is if they remained R 12 as it currently is, obviously they would start building into this open space, the green area.
Yes.
And you would go from probably around 100 houses to around 76 to 80 is what it would change.
Okay, thank you very much.
But you would lose the open space.
Thank you, thank you much.
And that would be the walking trails and the holding ponds?
The canopy he was talking about too.
Yes. You would lose that.
You'd lose the walking trails. The ponds would have to stay in order to meet the state stormwater.
Okay.
Would they build a berm, kind of like a terrace maybe? I'll say that.
It'd be done, yes.
The berm helps slow that water down.
That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Okay. My question would be, and it's along the same lines as Councilmember Hovis, what is the difference if we did say an R 12 cluster with 8,000 square feet and still have the six foot set back on each side? So it'd be 12 foot between the houses. How would that cut, would that cut down on the number of houses at 8,000 square feet in an R 12 cluster?
It would. Or it would cut into the green, the available green space.
How much? Is there any way to...
That's a 33% increase in lot size. So it's definitely going to eat into the green space or... Something would have to give. Either the number of lots goes, goes down, or we're going, we'll have less green space.
You're talking about a difference of, what, 2,000?
Right.
Square foot lots?
Yep. Here we're looking at 6,000 square foot lots, there we'll be looking at 8,000.
Eight, okay. So that would be 2,000.
And not only that, though, that changes the road locations, the road would have to be rerouted and all of that kind of stuff. So you end up with longer roads and which, and all of the longer roads have the stormwater associated with them also. So that would increase the size of your stormwater system and your ponds.
Yeah, the planning and zoning board, they also recommended that we leave it the R 12. Is that correct, Richard? The planning and zoning board recommended that they left R 12.
I thought they just denied it.
And they denied it.
Yeah, they didn't...
I would say the same thing, that they remain R 12.
Yeah, that'd be the same thing.
And where do you have the cul-de-sac? Is that big enough for trash, city trash trucks and the fire trucks to make that turn?
That's would be big enough for a fire truck, right? Yes. They have to be built for a fire truck access.
Okay.
And we have the two accesses for fire truck access also.
I've mentioned too, you did mention R 12 to 8,000 square feet, but if it's just plain R nine, it's a 9,000 square foot lot. So you've got three options there.
Let me ask you a question. Do you plan on moving forward with this development regardless of the zoning?
If you change...
Or is there a deal breaker?
It could be a deal breaker.
Yeah, good. The value of the land nowadays, you have to get a smaller lot to make it work financially, right?
Correct. And a lot of people don't like to maintain a large yard anymore.
You're true, that's true. I hear it from younger people especially, if they like.
Unfortunately, it is the way for the future.
It is. Are you, are you looking at a homeowners association?
Absolutely.
Because that's where I see some of your problems sometimes with the density is like, if you, if you don't have a strong homeowners association that prevents home street parking a lot, there is where you get problems with our fire trucks, our gardeners' trucks, all that getting through the neighborhood and doing what they need to do.
And I had a question along the lines when I read that too about the homeowners association. Would they be dues required for that homeowners association?
Yes.
Okay.
This neighborhood, there would be fairly minimal, probably in the $50 to $75 per month range.
Oh.
Maybe less. It's only, members of the neighborhood will serve as the officers, and then they will have annual meetings.
But each, each lot would be required to be a part of the homeowners association?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's good.
The neighborhood will not have mailboxes. At the first entrance coming up Black Rock School Road, on the right, there's a place there for mailboxes, cluster mailboxes. So there won't be mail trucks running through the neighborhood every day.
Yep, right here.
Yeah, right here. Yeah, I thought it might be there. Okay, now's your chance for any questions from council.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at if you did get all 100 lots?
Two to two and a half years before full build out.
Yes.
Wow. There's one option we can table at another meeting or, I'm just saying, it's, we've done it for two different developments and it's like we're handpicking now.
Well, I hope you understand my concern about the density between, this will be the third development, and we'll be talking about how many lots in the three developments.
Combined?
The Quinn is 500.
You might as well say you're a little over 1,000.
Right, a thousand.
But they're going to build them, tell them, oh, they're going to build them all.
Oh, no, they couldn't build them all.
It'll be a wait and see probably.
The Requiem Road development, they're looking at trying to do 100 a year when they get started. True Homes had said they're trying to do 50 per year when they start, and then I guess he's looking at 50 per year to do about two years.
Like I said last time, the more developments, the more competition there is, which I think will slow down the development of all three of them. Because there's so many, so many buyers. So by having another development, same type homes, it's going to slow down the development of the other two as well.
Can we speak back? Have we got a question?
You can come up. You have to come to the podium and state your name and address.
So I'm Sid Strapp, I live at 207 West Academy. I guess the first question I want to back up to was, you have a planning board, right? And they have voted against this. And I haven't heard an explanation. Why did they vote against it? Now, it's not, to me, it's not a reason, well, we've already approved two like this because we learn as we go along. And I just, to that point, that maybe, just, is anybody from the planning commission, I don't know, wait a minute, that can talk about what the negatives? Because why have a planning board if you're just going to discuss what they, or have I missed a meeting? Has that been discussed?
No, no, not at all.
So why isn't, Richard, somebody needs to present what the planning board recommended and why?
That's why I asked that question a while ago, what their concerns were.
Yeah, like, I mean, there had to be specific reasons, right?
Well, I sent over three new members on the planning board, Mr. Strapp and Ms. Dellinger, Peter Jackson, and also Matthew Mooney. They just, I guess they're country, they just, you know, can't see the development. That's my idea.
Well, I think we need a little bit more than that, Richard. I mean, come on, can somebody speak to what the specifics? I would be asking like...
I think it all goes back exactly what Richard said, to the size of the lots.
Oh, okay, well, now that's different, what they're all three good people there who vote.
More developments like Dewey Bean than they do the cluster development like the Strapp and the Requiem, but I mean...
Well, first of all, you know, I have to sort of apologize. I didn't even know, I thought you were talking about the Strapp estates because nobody explained. Is this like way, you go out Delvee Road, that kind of thing, and then it's up higher? Well, so, you know, the thing too is you've got water now coming off the Strapp estates that's coming down, that also hits Muddy Fork Creek, those tributaries up there. So you've got to sort of look at these two in conjunction as to, how much water do they really want to take on? Maybe at, you know, Moss Lake, I didn't even know that they would have a sale or...
The water's been going in the Moss Lake all these years from that land anyway, it's just changing now.
No, what he's saying is though, if you don't have it properly with retaining ponds, and you've got all that asphalt, right? And you've got all that concrete, and all those roofs and those houses. It's like a whole different world than, you know, the roads falling on them.
That's why they're leaving that natural area doing those retaining ponds.
The state regulates that.
That's such a small piece as to what...
It's been approved by the state already.
Well...
As far as the runoff.
It was approved by the state.
Yes. The state's already regulated that and then approved what their plans are.
Oh, in conjunction with the Strapp? So they looked at it?
That's in and of itself, they've had to regulate and approve for scrap acres, just like they have to regulate...
Yeah, but were they aware that both of those developments, it's not just yours, that both of them were handled?
I had no idea about that.
So that's a good question, I think, someone needs to answer, that's all I'm saying. And so if nobody can explain a little bit more, that's what I would say is fine for what we're listening to, what the planning commission is saying.
Well, thank you, Senator. I would like to get a consistent of where each member stands right now to see if we're even close or whether we need to continue this. We can legally continue it for two, two times, but, or if not, we're going to have to make a decision tonight. So I would need to know where everybody stands at this time. What are you thinking?
Like you, I think if we've approved two similar developments already, I don't see how we can deny this one. Like I said earlier, it's going to create more competition for these lots and these other two developments as well, which will slow down the development there. Maybe they won't be able to do 50 or 100 houses a year.
And you don't object to putting another pond in either?
No.
Right.
And we certainly want to do everything we can to maintain any runoff.
I don't know that that even came up with the Strapp property about the runoff for, I don't recall it.
It's not a steep...
No, it's the grades, not the gravity, it's not the same there for...
I personally am leaning towards continuing to get more information and to look at it closer, but that's just my opinion. I don't know that I'm ready to make a qualified vote yet.
I'm not either. Could we request the planning and zoning board to meet with us at work session?
Sure.
The planning and zoning board, we'd like maybe to meet with them at the next work session, which would be the last Tuesday of this month. And then we would bring it back again at next council meeting.
We're good with that. We're good with that.
Do you like that in a motion?
Uh, yeah, I have to have it in a motion.
I like it.
Do we have, do we have a?
But, uh.
We got some, uh, can you speak?
My name is Shirley Champion. I live on two oh nine Black Rock School Road.
Just me?
And I hear you say it's going to be two entrances and outlets. I know of the one, it's like five houses down on the left. I'm wondering where's the second one?
Way down at the end.
Yeah.
On the left. If you want to look right here.
Almost at the end. Think they would be.
You'll see his signs that he put up.
Oh, where the sign is.
The two, or, two resounding signs.
Okay. So, okay. That's gonna put more traffic on Black Rock School Road. Which, once you go on down, it turns into a dirt road. Most of the people don't want to use the dirt road, mess up your tires and whatnot. It's gonna put more traffic on Black Rock going back out to Delve. And I think that need to be considered as well. One hundred houses, more people, more buses, more traffic coming down at one small road.
Ma'am, would you state your last name again, please?
Champion, Shirley Champion.
Thank you.
Shirley Champion.
Thank you, Shirley.
Okay, any other citizen that would like to be heard before we exit public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just ask one question with the developer. Do we have enough room for school buses to turn in that area?
Yes.
Rather than have all those, I think it's dangerous to have all those kids from the development walk all the way out to Black Rock. You can have, think about a five-year-old, little girl of way the one.
Sure, if the fire truck.
From those developments back out to Black Rock to get on the school bus. It's, it's, this day and time, it's dangerous.
Now, I think if you've got a fire truck and a garbage truck, they're, they're as big as the school bus and they take as much room to maneuver, so.
It's the old teacher in me thinking about.
That's fine.
In this day and time, we have to think more than we've ever had. I'm not there anymore, I'm not, but we have to think about children safely.
May I at least even come over?
Hi, Mandy Harrow. I reside at four oh four South Elm Street. Um, I'd like to thank Councilman Hovis for rethinking the lot size. Councilman Freeman for maybe getting input from the planning and zoning board. That's two of my concerns. You've got a board that's, you know, studied this, talked about it, at least know what they, their concerns are. Also, I've got the lot size, and I'm not against new developments by any means. But we've got so many going in now. I hope there's going to study on the impact of schools.
Yes, thank you.
Being a retired school teacher that's still there, I don't know that our schools right now can just handle the influx of, you know, all of this. So I would think.
Comment I made earlier, that maybe we can get a new school in Cherryville.
Yeah.
Well.
Maybe a cherry.
Good luck with that.
You have to be.
Maybe tell them to listen to us instead of ignoring the terrible investment city. We've always been at the bottom of the hole.
But I would like for y'all to reconsider the lot size. Um, I just think that, that'll make a big difference on everything that's, all the concerns tonight. Thank you.
Mandy, one of the previous, uh, people just that had Richard's job too, that was my question to him about our number of kids. And once something's approved by the councils, what he explained to me, they notify Gaston County.
They notify Gaston County.
And tell them exactly what's fixing to come this way.
Okay, great. Because I, and I have not been at the meetings about this.
Yeah.
Um, but it is a big concern. And I'd just like to know some of their numbers and some of the information that they had gotten from the county on that.
Being a teacher.
And they have to do traffic impact studies too.
Exactly. I just think that's important for our citizens to know what, what's been done and talked about.
That's what counties always said, that, well, there's no growth in Cherryville. Growth is in the eastern, southern parts of the county. That's why they're getting new schools.
Right.
So maybe if we get some growth, we get a.
And I'm all for the new, I just think a lot at one time is a lot, you know, when you're talking about all these different facets that need to be considered.
Like I said though, if we have a third development with a hundred houses, it's going to slow down the development of the other two.
I think it will.
Subdivisions.
Because they're, they're not going to build a thousand houses if they're not selling.
That's right.
Because why would you build a thousand houses to sit here? It's kind of like what Gary's saying.
And we want a Kramer Mountain High School.
I like that one, like that.
Okay.
We want a Pink Palace in the west.
Okay, any other citizen that would like to be heard in public hearing? Former Mayor Strapp.
Thank you, Mayor. Wade Strapp, um, at one oh one C, South Elm Street. Um, and in full disclosure, I am, uh, one of the newer members of the planning and zoning board here in Cherryville. Um, so just to clarify, um, my part in those discussions and meetings that we've had and our unanimous vote, uh, for denial of this project, and I, uh, no means in my speaking for the rest of the planning and zoning members. And as a newer member and as a member of that board, we would welcome any occasion to meet and discuss this and other planning and zoning topics with the council. Um, in, in, in my mind, uh, it was lot size. Um, uh, the city of Cherryville has established this property as R twelve, twelve thousand square foot lots. Um, it has been that way for over twenty years, R twelve. The developer, the owner of the land, has owned that parcel for over twenty years. So they bought it at R twelve, they've known for twenty years it's R twelve. Um, so it, to, to me personally, it's the egregious nature of this request. We're not, we're not going to R fifteen cluster, or we're not going to ten thousand square foot lots. You're cutting the lot size in half. Fifty percent. All of the neighboring residential areas are R twelve, or if you go on over Dewey Bean, R fifteen. So you're taking an R twelve that has been R twelve for twenty years and you're asking to cut it in half. Perhaps if you're asking to go to ten thousand square foot lots, maybe there's some leeway there. But the planning and zoning board was asked to, to make a ruling on R twelve to the R nine cluster, which, you know, all the numbers, but basically we were asked to, uh, look at cutting the lot size in half. Twelve thousand square foot to six thousand square foot. And to me, that's just incredibly egregious. Um, and as a personal citizen comment, thank you, Ms. Hovis, I agree with you. High density is going to have a negative impact on our city. Whatever's done in the past is in the past. I don't see how you can make a ruling today based on anything else other than this one development. You've heard about water quality, you've heard about school impacts, you've heard about traffic issues. So I would just say that you do need to study it much more. And Rickway Road, Stratt Park, those are done. Those are done. Let's rule on this. Judge on this on its merits. Come on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, if not, uh, do I have a motion from council to, uh, exit public hearing at this time?
Send who?
Second.
Have a motion second to exit public hearing at this time. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none. Okay, now that's open for discussion by council on what they have heard. And, uh, we will listen to your inputs now. And take action from there if you'd like, or if you want to, uh, table it, or, uh, if you feel comfortable on making a decision tonight.
I make a motion to continue this public hearing at our next city council meeting of February, uh, calendar.
February twelfth.
February twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second it. Let's get all the details so we do make an informed decision.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to, uh, table this to our next regular council meeting of February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. I have a second to it. It is still open for any more discussion before we vote.
You still want the planning board there for the work session, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, no other discussion? Then we will take the vote now. All in favor of this motion, uh, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? It is unanimous. We will table it to the next council meeting, February the twelfth. Okay? We'll go on in our agenda packets. Next item is citizens to be heard. And any citizen that would like to speak at this time, they do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address. And, uh, comments will be strictly held to three minutes. Uh, doesn't necessarily have to do with, uh, the topic we were just on. Anything that you would like to discuss at this time, you may do so by, uh, under citizens to be heard. Do I have any citizen that would like to be heard at this time? Ms. Champion?
Yes, Shirley Champion, two oh nine Black Rock School Road. I'm just wondering about the dirt road, the dirt port at the, uh, upper end of Black Rock School Road. Is there any way that that could be paid? Because we've got so much traffic coming down and they, the, uh, speed limit is thirty-five. I'm right there in the middle. They're coming down fifty-five, forty-five. Police have been out there, they put up signs. None of that helps. But what I'm saying is so much traffic coming down going toward Delve. If that upper, um, dirt road could be paved, it could sort of split the traffic. And maybe could take away some of the speed, because they come in full speed with those new houses on and those, uh, apartments that they just put on.
It's not in, it's not in the city limits.
Oh, okay.
We don't have any control.
Oh, okay.
Well, that would be Gaston County.
Oh, okay.
If you, if you look at probably the last, maybe two or three of those, uh, duplexes that were built there, those are in actually the county and they're not in the city limits. So everything that way towards Flint Hill is in, in the county.
Black Rock School Road is a state maintained road, all the way through.
Right.
From Delve to Flint Hill.
Oh, the whole way.
The whole road.
The whole road. Yes.
So DOT, N C D O T, yes ma'am.
Okay, any other citizen like to be heard at this time? Now's your chance. Okay, if not, we'll move on. And, uh, next is consideration of council appointments by the mayor. And if you go to page thirty-six in your agenda packets, this is the appointments I am requesting. And I will read those, uh, in turn. The current, uh, appointment for Mayor Pro Tem, I'm asking that we reappoint Councilmember Jill Puet. And for ABC Board Liaison, uh, Councilmember John Abernathy. For Appearance Committee and Garden Club, Councilmember Hovis. For the Audit Committee, uh, myself and Councilmember John Abernathy would be chairman, uh, um, for another year. Central Line of Council of Government will be Councilmember Jill Puet and alternate Mayor H L Beam. Cemetery Committee Liaison, Councilmember Jill Puet. Chamber of Commerce Liaison would be Councilmember Gary Freeman with alternate Councilmember John Abernathy. For the Depot Museum Liaison and Historical Museum, it would be, uh, Councilmember, uh, Hovis and alternate Councilmember Gary Freeman. The Electric Cities Board would be Mayor H L Beam and the alternate would be City Manager Brian Dalton. Electric Cities Rate Committee, and this has to do with the rate that we, uh, charge for utilities. Uh, that's presented by Electric Cities. Councilmember Jill Puet and our city's Finance Director Dixie Wall would be the alternate. For the Fire Department Relief Fund, I understand, Board, we have to have two members appointed by council. And that would be Councilmember John Abernathy and they would be co-council members, John Abernathy and, um, Gary Freeman. Uh, for the Gaston County Lincoln Transportation Advisory Board, which is better known as M P O, it would be myself, Mayor H L Beam and alternate Councilmember Jill Puet. For our Recreation Advisory Committee Liaison, Councilmember Gary Freeman with alternate Councilmember Hovis. For our Y M C A Liaison would be Councilmember Gary Freeman and alternate Councilmember Janice Hovis. And finally, for our Main Street Program, Councilmember Jill Puet and Councilmember Gary Freeman. Uh, with all of these appointments, are they, are you willing to serve? If you're not, I need to know now.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then I would need action, uh, from council to accept these appointments for one year.
I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, you know, I'm fairly new to the city council. But, and, and maybe I don't understand how the Audit Committee works. But if John's going to be Chair of the Audit Committee, is that not a conflict of interest? Or am I thinking that the Audit Committee is not what I'm thinking it is? Maybe, maybe y'all can, uh.
Audit Committee really has no power other than suggestions to the city staff and the Finance Director, all right, Dixie, we don't make any rules or anything. We discuss what our budget is, where the money's being spent, if there's any transfer of money. If the, say the city wants to buy software to do the utility bills, or if they want to buy new meters for the water, new meters for the electrical, things like that. Then they bring it to the Audit Committee and Audit Committee discusses whether the funds are available at this time to do that. Then they get, make a recommendation to the city manager to follow up with this and bring it before council. And then council actually has the vote of whether or not they take any, uh.
Well, I just, I just didn't quite understand maybe how the Audit Committee functions, but I just thought, well.
I guess the best way to look at it, Ms. Hovis, is, is we have members from the community. Uh, your sister used to be on there before they moved to the beach. And they get a chance to look at the, at the budget. They get a chance to have the auditor sitting in the same room as them as they can, where they can ask questions and see how the city is operating financially. And citizens get to have some input as far as making sure.
So with a city council member being on the board would not be a conflict of interest?
Well, well, I think the Audit Committee also cooperates when there is a full audit with Butler Stove.
Right.
Correct.
Exactly.
So, so there were several inquiries that Dixie and the city council had to provide documents for. And so that was in part what, what they were doing. And the council, Mayor and council, you all have the authority to appoint com- appoint committees. That is within the statutes that you're allowed to.
Absolutely. I'm not, I'm not questioning that.
Yes.
I'm not involved in the audit itself.
Well.
The audit's done by Butler and Stone.
I understand that.
The committee just gets to see the results before it's presented.
And you're saying there's not a conflict, then I'm, I'm okay with it. If the, if the attorney said it's not, I'm okay with it.
And the thing about it is, the, uh, auditors come to the Audit Committee first. They, they come to the Audit Committee first and say, here's what's going on with your budget, with your audit. Here's, if we found anything that we think there could be improvement on, here's a suggestion. You may want it, at one time, it was, it was so simple, it was the, uh, the, uh, P cards, not P cards, but credit cards. We had one person looking over those, uh, when they came back to balance them with the, uh, statement from the credit card company. An Audit Committee recommendation was that we have two people to do that. So we had to point Dixie, who's our Finance Director, and then Ben Blackwell, at that time was our City Manager, he came behind her. So you had two, two sets of eyes looking at that.
Sure.
And not that there was anything wrong, and there wasn't.
I, I agree with that.
But that's just one example of how that Audit Committee works.
And let me just say, the, the reason this Audit Committee was created was because of the embezzlement that happened back in two thousand eleven.
I know that.
And, and the reality is, is, is then Mayor Oftale approached Andy West and the Audit Committee was created. And we actually got a rule. Committee was created. And we actually got a, a award from the State of North Carolina because of the Audit Committee.
Oh, yeah. I think it's a great, I think it's a good thing. I just wanted to clear up that situation that is not a conflict of interest.
But you've always had a council member to be a part of it.
Okay, all right, okay.
Who is on the committee now? Do any of them have CPA, any kind of financial credential? I mean, who is on the committee now? Because part of what they should be doing is asking technical questions of an accounting nature. This isn't just a, whatever the auditors say, we approve, right? In the other county where I served on it, we were very active. We had people with accounting background who had a look at financial statements. You know, that's all I'm asking too. I was, I, I had asked Brian about that recently. They haven't met in a long time.
Yeah, there, there were people on that. Bob Fares was on it from Carolina Freight.
Yeah, but how long has he been gone? I mean, that's one of my questions.
Yeah, that, that committee needs to be reappointed.
I think, since COVID, I think it just went by the way.
Well, and we lost some people. Like I said, Patty moved to the beach, and she came off.
Robert Fares said, I can't do it anymore physically. So it does need to be reappointed.
Yeah.
But there were people like that on there that had that background.
And I think Andy was the first chairman, he was the CPA.
Andy was the CPA. As I will retire, he was retired.
Did he just, did Sid just volunteer?
And like I said, my role was just to lead the meetings. I didn't vote, you're saying?
You didn't have a vote. I'm okay. I'm okay. I'm all right.
And I think we would go around the room at the end, and anybody that had any suggestions would make the suggestion. But we do have a motion on the floor and seconded that these appointments be approved as presented. So all in favor of the appointments as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There is none. Okay, now we will go to other business, item ten on tonight's agenda. Still gonna make the ballgame, aren't we? The...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Who made the motion?
Jill, I think.
For the appointments.
For the appointments.
You did.
Who seconded it?
Yeah, Jill made the second.
You did? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other business. Council, you have any business you want to talk about?
I don't want to delay us seeing the ballgame, but I was just gonna ask Brian or the chief, Police Chief, about our, our taxi service permit. Is it moving along, or where is it?
Excuse me. I received a call from Ms. Bomadere just before Christmas. He said he had already received these criminal histories I asked him to obtain at the courthouse. I have not spoken with him since the Christmas holidays, so I'm not sure where he's at as far as his stuff goes. He hasn't called me in reference to inspecting minicabs or anything like that. So we're kind of still in the loop.
Okay. At least you have been in touch with it.
Yes.
Okay. Any other business from council members? I would like our City Manager, maybe, can you give us any update on the museum?
I can. Let me, let me say one thing beforehand, because I, I need to recognize Lance White. He, uh, he's a local tree contractor that lives here in town. He called me a few weeks, well, several weeks back. And if you remember back when we had the storm down at the pool, we had, you know, large trees there in the parking lot, and, you know, we let people go down there and cut on them enough to where they could get some firewood, but it got to the point where we couldn't do that anymore, but we had enough large brush down there that we couldn't get it up with our equipment. He called one day and said, hey, if you don't mind, I'm gonna go down there, I'm gonna clean that up. I'm gonna get it up for the city of Cherub. No cost. Uh, New Year's Day, he sends me a picture of where he cleaned it up, and it is beautiful what he did. He put straw out. He did a great job, and I just want to recognize him first for what he did for the city.
Where he's talking about is right at Robert Ballard Park.
Wyatt.
Right there at the corner of Rudessol and two seventy-nine.
Right there.
Right there at the city pool. Did a great job. It is absolutely beautiful. We need to give him a couple people's numbers.
But I will.
It has trees in her yard.
In brief, a museum update, we did meet with Mr. Putnam, Councilmember Freeman and Councilwoman Hovis. Basically, we've talked about going back to when this all started. Palmer Huffstetter Senior, you know, gave, he's the charter member of, of the Historical Association, and he provided some new bylaws and recommended those bylaws be adopted. So we're back basically at that level where we're trying to negotiate with Mr. Putnam to, it's him and Lori Pughett that are the two members that are left to adopt the new bylaws and resign from the Historical Museum, but the museum would stay there as is, the material would remain inside, and City Council would then, based off the bylaws, appoint a new board for the Historical Museum. Uh, as you know, this afternoon, maybe around four o'clock, Mr. Putnam did send a list of items that he wishes to have. I think some of you, or most of you have had a chance to look at some of those, and some of that is not feasible, I believe. Some of it, uh, we might could look at, but a lot of it is not feasible. So at this point, you know, I think our best option is to, to basically go back to where we were and where, when we met with Mr. Putnam last week is, you know, Mr. Huffstetter has already given us the paperwork that he recommended we have them sign where they amend the bylaws and where they resign from the Historical Association, giving council the ability to appoint a new board. So at this point, I think our best option is to probably, uh, this week, that needs to be done, or we'll have to move forward probably.
I got one question. When y'all met, and I wasn't privy to be there, that meeting, and I have heard some of the discussion that was discussed at that meeting, but was it ever brought up about dropping the lawsuit?
No, I don't remember us ever even talking about the lawsuit at all.
Well, I told, I told him, I wasn't gonna give that painting back as long as that lawsuit is hanging over us.
Right.
What I'm referring to is a painting that I did for the city back in the early nineties. When I went through the museum, I saw it hanging up high, improperly framed, with no map, couldn't even see my name on it. And I asked Pat, the director, if I could take it and reframe it, and told her, you know, when I got it reframed, I'd bring it back. But in the meantime, all this controversy started, and we got sued, and we were told not to have any contact with them. And so I told him, and I told them all that, once it's all settled, I'll give it back to the museum. But really, I don't think I have to. It's got my name on it, and I did it for the city, not for the museum. But I will, I'll give it back to them once it's all settled.
Yeah, I, I personally think we've made our stance very clear. We sent the letter saying that as of December thirty-first, our lease agreement with them was null and void, and it is currently, so we, there's no lease agreement in place. I think the relationship between us and that board is fractured beyond repair, and they reached out to us at four o'clock today, wanting to negotiate terms at the last minute. I'm not in favor of that. I am all in favor of us setting a deadline before we leave here tonight to say, here's our terms. Number one, you adopt the new bylaws. Number two, you resign, and then we will move forward with establishing a new board. So...
I would put in there, we dropped the lawsuit.
Well...
Technically, the lawsuit has been...
Lawsuit has been dropped, even though the lis pendens is still maybe...
Not with prejudice or without, is that still?
Well, it was without prejudice.
Right.
So it could be refilled. Um, the lis pendens have expired, so that will not, as to your question, yes, Mayor Beam, it should not impact any of your properties.
Okay.
Those are expired by operation of law statute. So it's just the, like Brian said, technically, the lawsuit's dropped.
Okay. I, I don't understand why, why they think they can make the agreement when we own the building, and they're telling us what we can do. We need to be telling them what they can do or else. And I think that's basically what John's saying. We put a deadline... What are you thinking about? Maybe a week?
Here we are, January eighth. So I'll go ahead and form us in a motion. I mean, I'm ready, and we'll see where it goes. So I hereby make a motion that we give the current board of the museum until this Friday at five o'clock to adopt the new bylaws and resign. And if that is not done, then we will formally move forward with eviction of the board. I want to make it clear that we would like for the stuff to stay, and we would like for that building to main, be maintained as a museum. But I do not want to, I, I think the relationship's too fractured with that board. I want to, that board to resolve, I mean dissolve, us appoint a new one and move on establishing a, a new lease and a new agreements with that new board.
I'll second it. We need the deadline.
Okay. Uh, so the deadline will now be, what, what date will that be? This coming Friday?
The twelfth.
If we do not, if that board has not resigned...
At five o'clock, yep.
Then we go, we start the proper legal procedure of evicting them, that board, from the building.
Yes.
With all artifacts remaining in the building. Is that, have I left anything out? Because I want to get it exactly the way you want it worded for our minutes, exactly. And, okay, so we got that on a motion and a second. Any other discussion by council?
Can I interject just one thing?
Yes.
This Friday at the deadline at five o'clock, do you want to lock the doors?
Yes, absolutely. Nobody in there. They shouldn't be in the building, period. I mean, that's my, my opinion.
Mayor and Council.
Lock it now.
The, the, the rule is that we can only do that, which is called a self-help, self-help eviction, so long as it does not breach the peace. So, and breach the peace is a pretty low threshold. So if they protest and say, no, you can't put the locks on the doors, the courts have recognized that that's enough to say that that would be a breach of the peace. So I suggest we serve them with eviction if we, before we lock any doors, just so that we are making sure that we are doing everything. We will have to provide that, that, we will have to go to the court and file a summary ejection motion, and then there will be a hearing set within twenty days of that motion. They will be served with that, and then, and they can remain in possession during this time. And then the court will, the magistrate will hear our case, and they will make a ruling. And then they're given ten days to appeal, excuse me, seven days to appeal. And if they do not appeal on the eighth day, business day, then you can get the sheriff to forcibly remove them.
I have a question. Who are we evicting? Are we evicting the, the hysterical, historical...
Was that a Freudian slip?
Are we evicting the board members? I mean, who are we evicting, actually?
Our lease is with the Historical Association.
The Association.
And there's only two, two members?
Two board members. Al Putnam and Lori Pughett.
Pughett.
The rest of them have already resolved.
Okay, so we'll be evicting...
I have a question for a city attorney. You said they could still have possession of the building until, and it could be up to twenty days before. Sure. Can they remove any of the artifacts? Who really owns those artifacts?
That's a good question, Mayor Beam. I haven't seen anything.
Now Palmer Senior, if you remember Palmer Senior, when he come and talked to us originally, he clearly told us that the Association owns the artifacts within the building.
Except the fire truck. Fire truck, loads the city chair.
Yep, but they own the artifacts.
See, I've heard people say, I only loaned them something to use in that museum, and it, it was with a handshake or by word of mouth that they could put my prom dress up, say, in display, but I still own it. My picture, my sister has a picture as big as the seal of Cherryville there of her when she was administrator of Carolina Care Center. She only loaned it to them. She didn't give it to them. So what happens if they take that?
My opinion, that's not a legal battle that the city needs to get involved in. That's between that individual and that association.
Okay.
Okay, if, if that's the case, then I think we need to proceed with haste if we can get this settled by Friday. We need to get new board members and, and proceed with haste.
And I'm guessing if, if, if the current board members would come in tomorrow or whatever and amend the bylaws and resign, then we're good.
Exactly.
We don't need to go forward with anything else.
Exactly.
We're good.
That would be ideal if we can reach a mutually agreeable agreement.
Wishful thinking.
Yes.
Yes. Let me ask a question. Would you have the Police Chief, he went and filed a report that I stole of that painting, and you went and found out that I didn't, right? Can I file, file a report on him for faults? File a false report?
Retaliation is not really a, a crime. So, no, I, I would say we would not file that report. I mean, as far as, because we know that, that report's already been filed here, and we would know that, and that it was basically a retaliation. So, no, I would say that we would...
So who's retaliating? Me or him?
Basically, you would be retaliating at that point.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't think mine?
Not for that incident.
Okay, we still have a motion and a second on the floor, and that is to proceed with eviction of the Historical Association from the building one oh nine.
Eastman.
Eastman. So all in favor of this motion, say so by aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, the same, and there is none. It is unanimous. So we'll get that proceeding on the way, and with that deadline of Friday. Okay, any other business? Is there any business from staff that they'd like to bring up?
The GM custom has started submitting the plans to try to get the permits awarded. We do have a couple things that the county has bounced back to us, so we've sent the plans back to the engineer to get them to make a few changes that, that the county has asked for, and then hopefully we'll have the permits very shortly.
Zipping off the very same plans that Stanley had?
Don't get me into that.
Is Stanley not in Gaston County?
I've asked that question a hundred times. How do you, how do you deny a permit of a building that you've already approved, and, and it's the same engineer, same plans? But I don't know how to answer that one.
Okay. All right, anything else come before council tonight? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.